Gentlemen, it's June the 6th, 2017. Here at 6:00 PM, we're here at City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council Regular -- City Council Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Pastor Ben Hubner of the Acton United Methodist Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge, led by Councilman Tony Mobley. All rise, please.
If you bow your head with me. Eternal God, as we gather together to do the business of this city, help us to seek Your will. We know that of our own power, we are woefully inadequate and prone to fight. But when we call upon You, our divisions can be overcome, and, God, we know that we can truly move mountains. We thank You for those before us elected to office and all those who do the work of governing. We ask You to bless them, to teach them to seek You first and to set aside their own ideas and agendas. Re-consecrate them to do the work that is set before them, that they might lead us ever closer to You. We pray all this in Christ's holy name. Amen.
And now if you're doing in the place of this great country today, I pledge allegiance to the tribe of the United States of America and to the free republic of which we stand, one nation, one God, indivisible, indivisible, God. In that which is what I have. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, one state, one God, one unity.
Thank everybody for being here tonight. We're gonna start out, we're gonna have a proclamation, and this proclamation is the Longest Day in regards to the Granbury Bridge Club's Day of Raising Funds and Awareness for the Alzheimer's Association. I'd like to call upon Fitz, Fitz Gerald. The proclamation reads, "Whereas in the United States, someone develops Alzheimer's every 66 seconds. More than 5 million Americans are living in this -- with this disease. And whereas there are 15.9 million families and friends who provide care for people with Alzheimer's and their dementia in the United States. And whereas in 2017, Alzheimer's would cost the United States $259 billion, this number is expected to rise in over $1 trillion by 2050. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth-leading cause of death in the United States. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is the only top 10 causes of death that cannot be prevented, cured, or even slowed significantly down. And whereas the Longest Day of 2017 occurs on June the 21st, and on that day, the Alzheimer's Association conducts an annual fundraising campaign called appropriately "The Longest Day." Last year, the Granbury Bridge Club's 74 participants raised over $5,600 for Alzheimer's research. Now, therefore, I then, Hewlett, the mayor of the city of Granbury of Texas, in conjunction with the Granbury Bridge Club and the Alzheimer's Association, do hereby proclaim June the 21st, 2017 as the Longest Day. And in Granbury, in the city of Granbury, we encourage all citizens to participate in the Granbury Bridge Club's Day of Activities at Frina's Winery and Cafe to raise funds in honor of those facing Alzheimer's. The day includes breakfast, bridge lessons, bridge games, lunch, a silent auction, an art exhibit, bingo, and a cash bar. The evening at the Harbor Lakes -- also on that evening at the Harbor Lakes Golf Club, Eddie Irving and his classic swing band will provide music and dancing beginning at 7:30 PM. I plan to be there. Thank you very much for that. At this time, normally in our program, we have a citizen's participation. I don't see where anybody has signed up. Last call, Tom Baker, to sign up. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda, we have seven items there. First one being consider approving the city council meeting minutes of May 16th, 2017, and the joint regular meeting. Also, item number two was to consider approving Amendment Number One to the Engineering Service Agreement with McCord Engineering Corporation for Transmission and Distribution Lines, Relocation Design and Coordination Due to the Granbury Regional Airport Expansion. Number three was to consider approving the purchase of installation of audiovisual equipment for the Granbury City Hall Council Chambers for Ford Auto Video Systems, LLC, in the amount of $58,731.33, mostly funds, I understand, going through the PEG, and it will actually upgrade our abilities to see what everybody else is seeing out there. Also, number four is to consider approving Order 17-35, amending the general fund budget for fiscal year 2016-2017 for an emergency information technology infrastructure replacement project, and consider approving the purchase of servers and computer equipment related to the project from the CDW Government LLC and Informatic Service in the amount of $100,000. Number five is to consider approving Order 17-36, granting United Electric Corporation Service an electric power franchise to use the public right-of-way of the city of Granbury. And as you know, we did our two readings on that, and now we're just approving the ordinance, or approving that ordinance. Number six is to consider supporting the North Central Texas Council of Government application for a DR 4272 Hazard Migration Grant Program. This project developed the Hood County Hazardous Mitigation Action Plan update and agrees to contribute the city of Granbury's portion of the 25% local match. And item number seven is to consider approving Order 17-37, amending the taxation chapter of the Code of Ordinance for the city of Granbury by amending Section 11-03 of the sales tax article. And this, again, is just a -- actually, I would call to the sales tax cleanup there. So council, you had an opportunity to read over these consent agenda items. Are there any items on there you wish to change or to remove from that or discuss?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons.
In the minutes, there's a reference to something called Cartport, and I leave questions in the right to put Chris on the cartport.
Oh, it had cartport?
Yeah, in the middle of the page.
We'll get that corrected.
And Mayor, I've got a couple of questions on two and three.
Councilman Couse. Go ahead.
I can go ahead?
Yes. I mean, do you want to pull them off? We'd do so. Would you like to pull them off and discuss them? Okay, we have a request to pull item number two, and item number three, we'll drop them down to the deliberation agenda. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda?
I only have one question, Mayor.
Councilman Allen.
On four, for transferring $100,000 out of our general funds. Is that correct?
It's actually coming out of the continuous fund, the contingent fund, yeah.
Okay, out of 2016-17. So we didn't have that in the budget for this to start with, correct?
Let's take it off the agenda and we'll discuss it.
Okay. Okay, we've got three items on the consent agenda that we're going to remove and move on to the deliberation agenda. Council, any more discussion, any more items you'd like to remove off the consent agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda unless item number two, three, and four.
No move.
I've got a motion by Councilman Allen and a second by Councilman Couse. Any more discussion on those consent agendas, items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those items are approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda, that first item being item number two on the consent agenda, consider appointing Amendment Number One of the Engineering Service Agreement with McCord Engineering. Chris, I'm gonna call upon you and the staff to give us an update on that one, please.
You bet. As you recall, we're in the process of doing design work and relocating power lines for the airport project, and the first portion of this agreement, the original portion, was for $100,000. We're approaching that now, and the relocation agreements that we have executed with Brazos and with United have us doing engineering on some aspects of both of those, but mostly on United co-op. So these are reimbursable funds that'll be coming through our land match grant that we get from Tech dot. But as we know, we've got an engineering firm that's been working real close with us on the electrical portion, and also, they've been working with our stuff, but through the agreement, it was dissolved that they would do the stuff for United co-op as well for the relocation. So there's all kinds of work that needs to continue to be done.
Okay, I just wanna -- I understand that it's not gonna be -- it's not gonna be revenues from the city. It's grant money, basically, right?
Will be reimbursed, yes.
But was this an item that was over budget?
No, this was -- we didn't know what the scope of work would be when we began this project, because through the negotiations of the relocation agreement, it became apparent they wanted us to provide the engineering services as well.
Didn't we get 600,000?
We're in the process -- we're in the process of getting 666,000 towards that engineering cost. And we'll be getting that as soon as we can get some title policies issued. But we also have the three point, or the 3 million coming this summer as well.
It is 600,000 on the note. Yeah. And we had always estimated, McCord has always estimated that their contract would be 250,000. We, in March of 15th of 2016 is when we did the $100,000 contract, just to get us on down the road.
Council, any more questions or concerns on that item? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the amendment.
No move.
I've got a motion by Councilman Couse and a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion on that item, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That item is approved from the consent agenda. Item number three is consider approving the purchase and installation of audiovisual equipment. Chris, do you wanna give a staff report on that one, please?
I'll call on Tony Toll to kind of fill us in there. This is a project we've been working on for over a year, not knowing what it would cost, but this resolution is unacceptable on what we're doing, and we've done --
Mayor, council, city manager, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have on this.
I was just wanting to know, does that include a new screen behind us?
No, sir. What it will do is it will take the signal that's being generated for the screens in front of you, the screen behind you, and the screens on the side, and make that signal a full HDMI signal. Right now, the signal that you're getting is a VGA signal that is scaled up. That's why on some of your screens, when you see things, they're a little bit blurry. And so what we're gonna do is we're gonna change the equipment in the back and the wiring up to the back to be full HDMI. And it also includes a new projector and wiring down into the table in the back room, which will now take and leave a permanent projector on the ceiling for you to be able to operate anytime you're in there with a meeting, you need a projector.
And we're paying for this with the public education funds.
Right, paying with PEG funds.
Well, I -- someday, I'd like to see a much bigger screen behind us.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You know, our only complaint, Tony, I ever hear is that letter on the screens out here are too small.
Yes, sir.
Sitting in a certain area, the light shines on.
Right. What this will allow us to be able to do is it will allow us to be able to take our project, the projection of the PowerPoint, and change the PowerPoint from VGA to HDMI. So it not only becomes bigger, but it comes crystal clear on these screens, which are HDMI screens to begin with. We knew we were gonna do this when we put these screens in, we just didn't know when.
So the wiring that we're currently operating with is when the building was built, '15?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. So we're replacing that, and it is rather expensive, but there's some switches. And we are using the PEG funds, it's not coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of PEG funds, which is very important to us, because those funds come as a franchise for -- on top of our franchise agreement for the time. We're limited on how we can spend those PEG funds.
Very good, thank you. Any more questions, council, to Tony or city manager Chris? Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the audiovisual equipment.
No move, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen, second by Councilman Couse. Any more discussion on that item, council? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is the consent agenda, item number four, consider approving Order 17-35, amending the general fund budget for the fiscal year 2016 for the emergency information technology infrastructure replacement. Chris, can you get us a --
Yeah, we had a, an AC unit that cools our computer room, go out and caused some severe damage to our server. We filed an insurance claim. It looks like we're gonna be bucking a little over $50,000 in insurance, and we would like to go ahead and move forward to get this. We're kind of just limping along in there right now. Go ahead and get what we're needing and get this taken care of and wait for the insurance check to reimburse ourselves. But altogether, we anticipate a budget of $100,000, not to exceed that, and that we would be taking that from our budget contingency fund that we have for emergencies like this to go forward. That's kind of where we're at.
How much we got left in that fund?
Ava, would you like to address that? I don't think that we've taken any out of it yet until today.
No, we have not. We had $285,000 in there, so we'll have 185,000 left.
We'll get the ideas, Mr. Allen. Put 60,000 back in there to get some GM out of it.
Well, it'll go just in the general fund as revenue, and it won't be appropriated to spend again. But it's kind of like staying in the contingency fund, it'll be in the insurance revenue. Any other questions?
Wait, Chris, what Mr. Parsons said was it won't go in general, it won't go in general fund?
It will. It goes straight into the general fund for the line item for insurance proceeds.
Okay, okay. That's all, Mayor.
Very good, thank you.
You know, we typically don't budget insurance proceeds to be spent. You know, it's kind of a wash, but we budget for expenditures, and then something big like this, obviously, we need a budget plan, a contingency, so that's why we have that set up that way.
Thank you, Chris. Council, any more questions, concerns on that item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve Order 17-35. I've got a motion by Councilman Parsons. I got a second by Councilman Couse. Any more discussion, council, on that item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, moving down to the deliberation agenda, item number eight, a public hearing and consider approving a request of First National Bank to replat. I'll call upon Scott Topcheck.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a replat request. You can see the area bounded in a dark red. Everything's contained within the corporate boundary of the city of Granbury. The two structures that are currently on site is the First Financial Building located to the south. I believe to the north, that's the Dental Office. You can see the carve-out where the Dental Office is, in essence, this plat is creating a three-lot subdivision, but only including one lot, but creating two lots out of the one lot, inclusive of the First Financial Bank. We saw this replat application in 2011 as a part of processing the replat. The council placed notes on the plat regarding sidewalks and the improvement of 167. That note is still on this replat application as presented by the applicant. At such time, the property, undeveloped property develops, or 167 North is improved to an urban standard facility. All the property owners will need to install the sidewalks along the urban standard frontage. They are in the A-Mud Utility District. They have a 10-inch waterline available to it. We asked them to provide the fire hydrant coverage halos to DRC. That was provided. Your Planning and Zoning Commission and your city engineer recommend approval of the plat as presented. Mayor, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns for Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said plat, the said replat, sorry.
No move.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley. I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Council, any more discussion on this item? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next item, item number nine, is a public hearing and consider adopting Order 17-38, approving a request of Kathy Casey and Jim Leach for the Pacific use permit. Scott, I'll call on you.
Thank you, Mayor, council. What we have is a request located in and our seven district. This is north of Doyle, just to the west, second lot west of Houston Street. What the request is, is it's currently being used as single-family residential, it's primary use. There's a secondary building in the back, and the applicant owner is requesting to occupy that structure for family members' occupancy. Our zoning ordinance does allow for these accessory dwelling units for immediate family members, in essence, it's a mother cottage or a mother-in-law cottage that could be located in a single-family district, provided that the city council issues an S U P, and that's what's being proposed here. We have a site plan that was provided by the applicant. The applicant did go before the Historic Commission and the Z B A regarding the usage of the gravel parking lot in order to sustain the structure in the back. That was approved, as well as the advocacy from the Historic Commission. The issuance of the S U P under our definition of accessory dwelling units, by ordinance comes with conditions that are ingrained in the ordinance itself, but the Planning and Zoning Commission rolled those as conditions into the adoption ordinance that you're, for your consideration. P and Z recommended approval of this application by a vote of five to one. I'll go through these very quickly, and it kind of gives a tone of how these things operate. Accessory dwelling units shall be allowed on the same lot tract as the main dwelling unit. One accessory dwelling unit may be constructed by right on the lot. The accessory dwelling unit shall be separate from the main dwelling unit, must contain kitchen facilities. As a sidebar, the applicant knows that they need to go through the inspection process if there's any interior work done to the structure. The accessory dwelling unit must be constructed or remodeled only with the issuance of a building permit. The dwelling unit may be sold only with the sale of the entire property, including the main principal dwelling unit. The accessory dwelling unit shall be located behind the main dwelling structure. Accessory dwelling units are not permitted in the front. And a site plan shall be attached to the adoption ordinance, and the applicant has provided that as well. Also, as a secondary note from staff, typically with these S U Ps, we see term limitations or something that doesn't allow the S U P to be tied in perpetuity to the property. Both city staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt that the term limitation wasn't applicable in this case. Rather, we want to give you the thought that we can add another condition that states if this, if this secondary accessory dwelling unit is ever abandoned or vacated as defined by the zoning ordinance, then the S U P automatically becomes null and void. And we have that as a part of our zoning ordinance requirements, predominantly for non-conforming structures, but it goes into great detail on what defines abandonment or vacation. The issue with staff here is if we just issue the S U P as is, with those conditions, with no term limitation or no vacation or abandonment statute, two or three title transfers away from now, somebody theoretically can come in 15 years from now and say, oh, there's an S U P on that property for an accessory dwelling unit. So the, we're just, we're just adding that level of protection. So this proof of discontinuance, abandonment must be provided in order to vacate or abandon the use and void out the S U P, but it's a, but it's, from my standpoint, it's a necessary process in order to tie it to the property. That way, it's not in perpetuity and become a record-keeping nightmare. So your Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval by a vote of five to one, rolling those conditions one through seven into the adoption ordinance, and your city staff recommends adding that section, that eighth condition, that if the accessory dwelling unit has been abandoned or vacated as defined by the zoning ordinance 31H, the S U P shall automatically expire and become void. Mayor, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If you would now close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns on this item?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Do you want to add the, the said condition that was added to it for the --
Yes, I would like to.
Okay. So we have a motion to, to approve the said S U P with the said conditions and also adding the term limit condition.
Second.
And I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, does any more discussion on this item? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That S U P is approved. Our next item is to consider making an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission to fill a vacant seat. Council, as you know, we have a seat that has, one of the board members have resigned from the board, and so there is an open seat on the Historic, yeah, on the Historic Preservation Commission. As you seen, your packet, we have one applicant that was there, that has been there, Victoria Connors, so we can entertain a motion to appoint Victoria on there, or any other folks that you might have that you want to recommend. Council?
I move for the form of Victoria Connors.
I have a, I have a motion to appoint Victoria Connors to the Historic Preservation Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen, and the first was by Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion on that selection, council? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. We will appoint Victoria Connors to the Historic Preservation Commission. Our next item is item number 11, to discuss impossible action related to the city's increased fees associated with the Hood County Tax Assessor/Collector's non-renewal of the tax collection agreement with the Hood County Appraisal District. Chris, do you want to talk on that, or?
You bet. When this, when this item was discussed to be placed on the agenda, it was prior to the county authorizing the funding for the county tax assessor/collector to be funded for that activity. Since that time, they have awarded the funds necessary for her to take care of that business within the county, so I thought I would leave it as an idea for discussion on the agenda and possible action if you'd like staff to do anything. We did contact Greg Stewart with Appraisal District, the county appraisal district that does our tax collection, and he told us that he estimated, this is truly just an estimate, that the increase that we will incur because of the county pulling out of this mutual agreement that we have with them would cost us about $1,700 a year. So there will be some duplication of services provided through the county during the double, you know, the citizens will get an invoice from the Hood County Appraisal District for the city tax and for the school tax, and then they'll get another invoice from the county for their tax, and so they'll have to remit those payments to two different places. So because the state constitution allows for that to happen, and the county has their reasons, and I'm sure legitimate, and we don't want to have any problems with the county, but I wanted to leave this out here for y'all to talk about. There was some kind of expectation of a possible resolution to opposition of this activity, but at this point, it's a moot point, but if you wanted to talk about it, we could certainly discuss it. Be happy to answer any questions, you may now.
$700 increase, and that's it?
For our portion, yes, sir.
I know, Chris.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Councilman Parsons.
All right, so as I read at the, them taking this business away from the appraisal district, this county's gonna pull out about $130,000, and we're only gonna receive a $1,700 increase in that pullout?
Ava, would you like to further address that? I know that you talked to Greg personally about that.
And I guess, and then my second question, while she's making way up there, have we asked Hood County for a cost estimate from them to process ours on the county side?
No, we have not.
If we, I would be in favor of us asking the county to quote that, since we don't have dog in one way or the other, just want to get our bills processed and collected, right? So let's find out what the county would charge us to do our best. So, let's find out what the county with the hard best to do our best.
And, and also, before Ava gets up there, I mean, and I think it's right along in lines with Councilman Parsons talking about, is, is that a possibility that the city could go and use the same, and, and collect our own and leave their school out there on their own, I guess you might say?
Yes, we, we could do that. I would like to just remind everybody that we have a hundred percent collection with what we're doing, so we've got a pretty good system.
So, we wouldn't gain anything?
But we, but, if we could get a hundred and five percent, that'd be really good.
What are we paying now, so, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Wait, Ava.
Could you, do you, off the top of your head, do you know what they charge for the collection portion of our budget?
Yes. So, we pay about ninety-nine thousand dollars to the appraisal district a year, of that sixteen thousand is just for collection, and Chris has asked me to contact the appraisal district, and I have done it several times, trying to find out what the increase will be, and I basically asked Greg, what is that number? The school came up with a ten thousand dollars number, what is our number? And that's how he estimated the seventeen hundred number. He said, it's an estimate, don't hold him to that, they're still having workshops, trying to streamline and make sure that they have the final numbers, but the initial estimate he gave us on the collection side will be about a seventeen hundred increase.
So, it's a little more than ten percent increase on collection.
And that, that service.
That includes the appraisal.
That service doesn't include any of collection processing for pass-through accounts?
Yes, it does.
They, they process, in other words, they have, they have attorneys or the?
Yes.
Collection firm that does that side of it also?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Where, and, and I understand from the Hood, from the county, they will then have to do, have to hire lawyers and everything to handle the collection side. So, that would be the unknown in the equation if they, if county, if county quoted us across to collect.
The, the collection fees that are incurred by an attorney or passed through, we don't have to pay them, so when the people pay it, they have to add their penalty for the collection fees onto what they pay.
Onto what they pay.
On the link. And so.
So, it would be a push, then, on either person.
Yeah, the, the current service in total that they provide for us is just under a hundred thousand dollars. Of that, what Ava just said, sixteen thousand of that is what they charge for them to, to bill and collect our taxes, and that's what we pay.
You know, don't we use the same collection firm that they do for our water or sewer or something?
For our court collection, the, yeah, Attending Warren, yes.
Yeah.
Limeburger.
I'm like, Mr. Parsons, I think it hurts to get a breath. We don't have to make a decision.
No, no, no.
No, no, we just wanted to be able to have the information, the opportunity to talk about this, because it's a high-profile change, and change is sometimes hard, so.
What is the eighty-three thousand, what is the other eighty-three thousand dollars spent on?
Appraisal services.
Appraisal services.
They have to, by law, they have to.
They charge us for this.
Yeah, our cost of appraisal services.
So, we quit them, but they go up on that.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's pretty good. We're paying them to praise our property to go up.
Well, you don't want them to praise it to go down, that's a bad scenario.
I do, got to lock it in.
Yeah, I understand.
Too late. Council, any more questions for Ava or Chris here on this item? Thank you, Ava.
So, what we'll do, if, if council's in agreement, we'll reach out to the county and see if they're interested in offering that service to us and what it would cost. I'm not sure they're geared up and ready to do that yet, so they do need to get their business in order before they can probably take on some outside, but we'll ask.
Council, do we have a motion on that? Should we go ahead and allow the, the manager and his staff to reach out to the county?
No move, Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen and a second by Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved, we'll look forward to the results of that. At this time, I will now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, that all our members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in these following sections, section five-five-one oh-eight-six, Certain Public Power Utilities Competitive Matters, section five-five-one oh-seven-four Personnel Matters, section five-five-one oh-seven-two, Deliberation Regarding Real Property, and section five-five-one oh-seven-one Consultation with the Attorney, Legal Discussion Regarding City Charter Procedures Related to Council, Official Duties for Council and City Manager.